Let's get this going. We'll call this regular city council meeting to order on April seventh, two thousand and twenty five at six P M. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Present.
Mr. Sanders?
Present.
Mrs. McCullin?
Present.
Mr. Parrott?
Present.
Mr. Downs?
Present.
Mrs. Ross?
Present.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is public participation this evening. We have one speaker card. It's from Justin Chager, and he would like to speak with the council regarding the recent solar ordinance. Justin, if you'd like to step forward, please.
Thank you. I prepared a statement just to make sure I collect my thoughts. City Council and Mayor Tracy Welch, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm coming on behalf of the Stone River Group, Illinois Solar, First National, and our two customers that we're looking to put solar in for First National Bank in Tremont and El Matzatlan. Both of these customers have pending solar projects. I understand that the city recently updated the ordinance regarding solar installations, and I certainly recognize the importance of having guidelines in place to ensure that such projects are implemented responsibly. However, with this recent update, the scheduled project for First National Bank in Tremont can't move forward as originally planned. The new fence requirements present major obstacles in installing a ground mount solar system behind the building at seven ten Woodlawn Road. The proposed ground mount system will stand twelve feet tall, which now triggers the requirement based on the ordinance for a twelve foot fence. Unfortunately, with the necessary setbacks due to shade lining, the shade line, if you have a structure that's twelve foot tall, it has to be twenty four foot from that structure. Would require the panels to be at least twenty four foot away from that fence, given the space behind the building is only thirty two foot deep. It would be impossible to put a solar system behind that building at that with those size requirements. In addition to the spacing challenge, there are significant concerns related to the cost and the visual impact of a twelve foot fence. A fence of this size becomes a major construction project along with the solar as well, requiring deep concrete footings every eight feet to meet structural demands for wind and weight. Visually, it'll be compared to the fencing around like a tennis court, so that very tall fence all the way around with much more, which would be just as obstructive as the solar array itself. First National Bank in Tremont has secured USDA funding for this grant or for this USDA grant funding for this project, which was specifically tied into the installation of a ground mount system. They approved it as a ground mount system. This approval process was a result of a rigorous, long-year process that include multiple qualifications, one of which was a visual impact assessment by both the USDA and the state of Illinois that signed off on having that project at that location. We had to submit pictures and a lot of different things had to go through to get that one approved, and they were very specific about that location. I've done several of these grants, and they don't, that's, this is the first one that's had that study done. It's also important to note that do, that the discussion pursued to ground mount system was made intentionally based on the building's structural requirements. A rooftop array would only offset about twenty five percent of the usage, whereas the proposed system that we want to put in will offset about a hundred percent of their usage. If this project, if we can't get this project to move forward, they stand to lose about a hundred thousand dollars in federal funding for this project, and chances are this opportunity won't come again because they got fifty percent offset. And that has already been put on hold and probably will go down or go away. So they have that funding already approved. Once it's installed, they will get compensated by the USDA for that. At the time of submission, the city ordinance did include a fencing requirement, however, did not specify the newly increased height. This was an unexpected cost with the twelve foot fence that we couldn't include with the grant request because it was, we didn't know that it was there, and like I said, we submitted over a year ago. The bank is committed to being a long-term member of the community, and the solar project is going to help them stay there and offset their sustainability and offset their costs for being there. I know that the rules need to be in place for the benefit of the community, but also considered the needs taken in, especially with commercial installations. When looking at the El Matzatlan project, this property is completely surrounded by commercial. It has a hotel and a banquet center in front of it from the main road, and it'll be behind their building. So putting up, the view's already obstructed from every view, so putting up a twelve foot fence will just be as much of an eyesore as the array itself and add cost to the project that wasn't originally there. They have also qualified for a USDA grant as well, and if we can't get that in, then they'll miss out on those funds as well. Solar installations are very generally low maintenance and have minimal impact on the location where they're put in. If you add a fence, that includes, that increases the maintenance requirements and the requests, especially if you want it to be opaque. They have, it has to be, you know, more inspections, it has to be maintained over the life of that project. So it increases the cost of the project itself. Also, I'd like to make a note, on January twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty three, the state of Illinois passed legislation, House Bill thirty five sixty three and Senate Bill twenty four sixteen, that limits the ability of local governments to impose restrictive ordinances on wind and solar projects. While the city's current ordinance does not specifically prohibit solar, the height requirements make it so that we can't install the system that's required for that location. We're asking the city reconsider the twelve foot fence requirement and return it to the previous six foot that was there, still making it opaque, or even go to an eight foot fence, which is standard fencing, because twelve foot fencing is considered large commercial, whereas eight foot fencing is very readily available and lot lower cost. This change would allow the First National Bank to move forward where their project is planned, helping them reduce their energy costs, lessen their environmental impact, and be able to take advantage of the funds that's been awarded them. Thank you for your consideration. I'd welcome the opportunity to discuss this further, and I, we're looking to really get these projects put in place for them as soon as possible.
Alderman Parrot.
Yes, thank you for coming. Do you work with any other municipalities, and what are their guidelines or their, their rules for fencing for ground mounts?
I work with about thirty different municipalities, and the solar installer that I work with has been doing it for about fifteen years. Most municipalities require a security fence. There, we have not run into any municipalities that require, that have that as high as the system as and opaque. We, we've, we have about eighteen hundred systems installed in the state of Illinois right now, and, and also too, we're, we contacted our racking supplier, and they're like, this is the first we've ever heard of this type of ordinance in the state of Illinois.
So, and some of your other municipalities, cities, then you have twelve foot ground mounted next to residence?
Yeah, butted up to, butted up to residential, so commercial, we do eighty percent of our installs are commercial installs, so they're, they're next to residential, they're roof, they're roof mount, so we have, we have banks in the middle of town where they're, they're on their green space. So yes, we have that situation where it's commercial next to residential, and it's, most of our systems sit fourteen foot. We can get this one to twelve. So they sit fourteen foot tall at the, at the top, and they have just a chain link, six foot security fence around it.
And do you know if Tremont went to the residents and explained to them what they were considering doing?
I don't, I, I, I don't believe that discussion happened, nor do I know if it happened or not.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, first of all, can you repeat the Senate and House bills that?
Yes.
You referenced?
So House Bill thirty five sixty three.
Okay.
And Senate Bill two four one six, and they were passed January twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty three.
So you and I had some conversations on the phone for the council's awareness, and, you know, in the interest of Tremont Bank making a substantial investment in the community with the bank that they built, the brand new one, I think it's worth having a discussion about a compromise of sorts on this ordinance. I don't know if eight foot is the compromise solution for this particular one, but, but I do think that we, we need to be mindful of that stuff when we're having this discussion. Because I know there's a cost to the bank. El Matzatlan's getting ready to, to, now, the setback isn't an issue for El Matzatlan, the way I understand it, because it's a big open field. It's just this location, right?
This, this is, this one has the more specific because we're limited on the space, the, the green space from their parking lot to the existing fence and, and the, the green space behind it. And part of the reason we didn't go wider was we're trying to keep it behind the building, so it's as much behind the building as, as possible, because we could stretch it out, but it would go that entire fence line. But we're trying to keep it behind the building, so it just tucks behind it.
It would be behind the building?
Yeah, it would, it would be directly behind the building. It would stick out about three or four foot. If you're looking directly at the building, it would stick out just a little bit on either side.
Okay. Alderman Bateman?
So just a quick Google search turned up, the city of Washington, Illinois, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty three, passed an ordinance saying that any solar array non-residential cannot exceed a height of ten feet above grade. So your twelve feet, is that from ground level twelve feet, or?
That ground, ground to the very top of the, of the, the panel at the angle, yeah.
Have you considered other options, like, some, some of the other things that are more popular in cities right now are, like, a parking awning for your employees, and the solar would be on the roof, to where it wouldn't be so obstruction or?
We have looked at that. That increases the project cost by a factor of a minimum of six. So it would cost, the project cost right now would be two hundred thousand. That would make the project cost a million dollars just to put up the proper structure and have it engineered properly to carry the weight and the wind to put on top. But yes, we have looked at that. We did have a bank that had, that did that over their drive-through, but it increased it significantly.
Mr. Hobble.
So I'm curious. I'll be interested in speaking with you subsequent to the meeting, to get some more information.
Sure.
On those House bills and Senate bills, because I, the House bill that has that number that was passed in two thousand and twenty three, to me, it looks like it was about generative A I. There's currently a House bill of that number in the House right now, but it's in the rules. It's in the Rules Committee. And there is a Senate bill right now that's in the Senate for the Illinois House here, and it is also in a committee, so they're not passed, from what I've seen. And those do deal with solar, but they amend the county code of solar, which is not relevant to the city, so I might be seeing the wrong ones here, so I'm interested in speaking with you thereafter to try to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Organize your research.
I'll get you that information that I got, where I, I received mine.
Okay.
I reached out to Senator Turner's office and had the same answers, that it was for county municipalities, not cities.
And the, the way that, the way that they're written, it's written for local municipal, it, it also has wording in there for local municipalities.
Right, there wasn't, there was a House bill, Mr. Bateman, yes, there was, in two thousand and twenty three. It only deals with the county code fifty five I L C S, not sixty five I L C S. And that was, in essence, to where the county is just can't outright make it to where solar farms cannot exist within their respective counties. They can't put up roadblocks of that nature. But I, I've yet to see something from, for the city, so again, yes.
Okay. Does the council have any other questions for Mr. Chager? Alderman Parrot.
Do you know if living next to ground mounted solar increases or decreases residential properties?
That I have, I, I couldn't speak on that at all. I, I would have no clue.
All right, thank you.
As far as that is concerned.
Alderwoman McCullin.
I have read that it does decrease a small percent if you're living next to a solar array. There's a small decrease in property value. So I, I would suppose it would really, would depend a lot on how it looked and how it was structured and things like that, too, but, but yeah, that's what I've read anyways.
Yeah, Justin, so with the panels in the appropriate angle of tilt at twelve feet tall, and if the council were amenable to revisit this topic and modify it to an eight foot requirement, is there a risk of glare from the panels that would impact people on wood lawn?
Not in an, not in an eight foot fence, because your, your glare angle at that point, because your glare is going to come from the bottom of the panels, so even a six foot fence would eliminate any glare that would be coming from that. And they're southern facing, so the, the sun would, the sun moves this way, so the glare is going to bounce up rather than out.
Okay. Alderman Bateman?
Nothing, I, I'm just digging deeper into the Washington ordinance. It's, it's not undifferent than ours. We may have just a little bit higher fence restriction, but there's, theirs is actually more restrictive than ours.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share with the council, Justin?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so you'll speak with Mr. Hobble afterwards?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we, item number five is the students of the Land of Lincoln CEO program would like to speak to the council. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kennedy McCree, and I am here with the rest of my team from the Land of Lincoln CEO class. This semester in the CEO class, we have been working on starting our own businesses. We are all so excited to debut them for you all at the annual Land of Lincoln CEO Trade Show. The trade show is on April thirtieth at five P M. at the American Legion. The trade show is also an opportunity for the new students to sign up for the class for the coming year. Cheyenne is passing out invitations to the trade show, and we would love to see you all there. Now I'm going to turn it over to Finley Hewitt, who's going to talk about our individual businesses. Thank you.
Hi, Finley.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. First, I'm going to talk about Peyton Bunner. Sorry, I feel like I'm so close to this thing. He is doing a detailing business. It's called True Detail, and I'm just reading what he wrote here, so. It's a high-end auto detailing service from deep interior cleanings to showroom quality exterior finishes. And like Chey, or like Kennedy said, that will be at the trade show for you guys to see. Kennedy back there, she is doing dog treats. So Canine Confections provides all natural dog treats at an affordable price to ensure that your furry friends are getting the best. Cheyenne is the one that was passing out the cards, and she is doing a social media marketing company. And so hers is Madrona Media focuses on your online presence while you focus on your business. And then Kyle Keeler is doing a lawn care business, and he wrote, at Long, Keeler Lawn Care, people can leave the lawn to me and save the time for what matters most. And then Cheyenne Madrona is going to be explaining the rest of them to you guys. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. For our last four businesses, Finley Hewitt's business, Positive Steps, offers dog walking services that cater to your busy schedule and your pets' everyday needs. Adeline Reed's business, Earthy Chick, provides eco-friendly minimal chem, minimal chemical skincare. Al Claudio's business, Rugify, Tufts, ooh, Custom Rugs, yeah, custom hol, goodness. Custom high-quality rugs tailored to your specifications to incorporate your personal style into any, any space. Ivy Sandals Business, lastly, Ivy, oh my goodness, gravy, Wild Ivy, both creates and designs high-quality clothing without high price tags, while making an impact by donating ten percent to those in need. And just to note, this event that you're getting invited to is open to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for any of the CEO students? Rachel, is there anything you'd like to share with the council about the program?
Thank you all for having our students. I'm Rachel Judd. I'm the chairman of the board, and so this year, our eight students have worked on these businesses, and when we say worked, they created them from scratch. They have met with city hall. They have gotten permits. They have gotten insurance. They have made websites. This is not a class project. This is a what are you going to do next project? And so the reason that we want to invite the community is because here in Lincoln, we believe in this idea that small business matters, right? We see it downtown. We see it down on Woodlawn. Small business matters. This is our next generation of small business entrepreneurs. So on the thirtieth, on Wednesday, come on out from five to six. Fun fact, there is a drawing. All the kids have put into a basket for a door prize, so you can get one of each cool thing from the business. But this program is also celebrating ten years this year, and so when you come out, you will see ten years worth of student work, board work, and community work to start this group of entrepreneurs. So thank you so much for having them. Thank you for letting them share with the community what's going on. We appreciate you.
Alderman Parrot?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Thank you. I was able to sample some of the, the cotton candy.
Oh, so good.
At the December or at the Christmas parade. Which one is this? Which one?
So that was their class business. So their first project is actually one to one hundred where they take a dollar and turn it into a hundred dollars. Their second business then is to take that money and to form a class business. So in the past, kids have run a five K. They have done a winter wonderland for children. This year, they decided to make cotton candy, and it was so good.
Good.
It was so good. So, yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you very much, Rachel, and the students for coming in tonight and speaking with the council. We appreciate it. Hey, next up is the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of six A, payment of bills, and six B, approval of minutes, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, public hearing. February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, regular city council meeting. March third, two thousand and twenty five, regular city council meeting. Six C, approval of request from Up and Smoke to permit the closing of various city streets for the fourteenth Annual Up and Smoke and Balloons Over Sixty Six Festival, Doc Dogs and Arts and Kraus from Friday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, at five A M. until one P M. Sunday, August twenty four, two thousand and twenty five. And six D, approval of request from Lincoln Community High School to permit the closing of various city streets for the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five, L C H S Senior Parade on Saturday, April twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five, from five P M. until its conclusion. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. Alderwoman O'Donohue made the motion. Alderwoman Rolfe's second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Abstain.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Okay, the next item up is item eight A, and before I read this, I'll, I'll let the council know that we will have to ask for an amendment to this. The way it's written on the agenda needs to be slightly modified based on what the council approved last week to come forward to the agenda, so I'll explain it in a second. The agenda item as read is eight A, approval of second rebuild Illinois resurfacing bid from P H Broughton and Sons in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. And what was approved last week was a not to exceed three hundred thousand, so we'll need a original motion, and then we'll do an amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Bateman made the motion. Alderman Sanders, second. Discussion on the, the agenda item? Okay, is there an amended motion to modify this to a not to exceed three hundred thousand dollar amount?
I'll make a motion to amend to change it to not exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Alderman Downs made the motion. Alderwoman O'Donohue, second. Further discussion? A roll call on the amendment, please.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Okay, any further? Hey, any further discussion on the item as amended? Okay, roll call on item eight A as amended, please.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolfs?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donoghue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is eight B, approval of Kinkakee Street Sewer Repairs by D and D Sewer Repair in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred six dollars. Still moved.
Second.
Alderman Parrot made the motion. Alderman Sanders, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolfs?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donoghue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Next item up is item ten A, approval of mayoral proclamation of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as the two-hundred-and-sixth anniversary of the Order of Oddfellows and the one-hundred-and-ninety-sixth anniversary of its presence in the Lincoln community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderwoman Rolfs made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolfs?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donoghue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is item ten B, approval of the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five D-Rock Grizzly H D Model two twelve C B Rock separator screen at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
Alderwoman McClellan made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolfs?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donoghue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is ten C, advising consent to the mayoral appointment of Stan Anderson as alderman for Ward Four, both of office following vote of approval. Alderwoman O'Donoghue made the motion. Alderman Sanders, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolfs?
Present.
Mrs. O'Donoghue?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, please step forward.
Please raise your right hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Stan Anderson.
Repeat after me. I have been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the office.
To the office.
Of Alderman Ward Four.
Of Alderman Ward Four.
In the city of Lincoln.
In the city of Lincoln.
The county of Wilken.
The county of Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
State of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman Ward Four.
Of office of Alderman Ward Four.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, Stan. Thank you, sir.
That's how you spill stuff.
Happened. Yeah. Kevin, flip the name plate up. Welcome, Stan. Okay, that brings us down to announcements this evening. I've got a few to share, and then I'll open it up to the floor. The first announcement is that there is a civic groundbreaking for houses eight and nine. So the Central Illinois Veterans Commission, they're building tiny home number eight and number nine at five sixteen Shortt, Tenth Street, Shortt Tenth Street. And that property actually sits on the corner of Adams and Shortt Tenth. It starts at six P M., and if you can attend, would love to have you uh attend that as well. The next item I've got is that there are some ribbon cuts that we received from Nyla Smith today. There's five of them, if you haven't seen your email yet. The first one is this Thursday, April tenth at three thirty P M., Oak Hill Tumble and Trampoline. They are celebrating the expansion of their business into their new building, and that is at eight seventeen Broadway Street. So if you can be present at three thirty P M. on Thursday, um, we'll do a ribbon cut there. The next one is Saturday, April twenty-sixth at eleven fifteen A M. At the Lincoln Veterans Assistance Commission Office, and that is in the John Logan Building here on McLean Street. They've done some work inside their building, added some new staff and some new programs. So they would like to do a ribbon cut on that day, if you can join them. The next will be on Saturday, May seventeenth, the L M H Market at the Logan County Fairgrounds at seven fifty A M. This is the tenth anniversary for the market, so they're they're hoping they have a good turnout. Then the next one is Monday, March nineteenth at the Oasis Senior Center. They are um celebrating Educational Center for the Visually Improved, and that is an open house from eleven to one. And then the last one is on Saturday, June seventh at three P M. There will be a ribbon cut for the annual Pride Fest in downtown Lincoln. They will send us some information, more details about um where, but I'm su- I'm assuming it'll be somewhere on the square in downtown. So that's all we got on ribbon cuts. Anything on those? Ms. McClellan? It is tomorrow. Yeah, it's tomorrow at six P M. Any other questions on? Okay. Um, then I also wanted to uh share about the electronics recycling. Walt, did you want to speak about, or Wes, one of you, about the the program this year, the dates and et cetera?
Yes, the electronics recycling event will be April twenty-first through April twenty-fifth at the Lincoln Municipal Services Building. We're doing it the same way we have the last, this is our fifth year, I believe. Uh, drive through the building, drop off your electronics, and go out the other end, and it's worked out very well so far. So we're looking at uh doing everything the same way, so.
And for the council's awareness, um, and Department Heads, Charity sent out a signup sheet today. So again, if you are able to help, there's some time slots on there um where you can come out and and assist with the unloading of of the items that are brought in. Mr. Bateman?
You should have a side wager on how many of those gigantic TV shows.
Oh.
I'm I'm thinking five.
Yeah.
I'll take the uh over on that.
Mr. Landers?
Yes, I I don't think I mentioned the time. Um, it's from eight A M. till two P M.
Okay.
And then on Wednesday, we'll be open until seven.
Seven P M.?
Yes.
Eight A M. to seven P M. Okay, and that's at the Municipal Services on three thirteen Limit Street?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so if you have electronics, bring them in. Those of us that are out there will help you unload them, and and you can just drive through and be on your way.
And that is for Logan County as a whole. It's not just Lincoln. It's for Logan County residents also.
Okay. Right, anything else on that? Okay, um, I also wanted to take a minute to make mention um and thank the first responders for their quick response in the storms that came through very quickly um last week in Lincoln. Uh, it was very brief, but it they did a lot of damage that storm did in a very short amount of time. Uh, we had the first responders out there. Mr. Landers' crew was out there. I'm assuming Mr. Bounds, his crew was involved in some way, shape, or form. It it really took a a lot of people from Lincoln, Logan County, and surrounding communities to to make sure that the community was safe. There was power lines and poles down, roofs ripped off, trees down everywhere. So it was quite a quite a mess. Um, one of the things that always comes up during this time that I think is worth sharing again, and I have to ask um the chief to to make mention of this, but first, can you can you educate us on the type of storm it was? And number two, can you answer the question of why did the tornado sirens not go off?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
So that day, they had forecasted severe weather. Uh, it was expected to come in around two to four. You know, that's just what the report was that morning. Every morning, Logan County Emergency Management sends me a briefing of the weather. They get that directly from the National Weather Service. So that morning, I was kind of watching the radar. I'm sure they were as well. Um, and the first call came in. The first call ended up being the multiple poles broke at West Lincoln, or uh
Siren.
Siren, thank you, in the lines down there on Woodlawn. When it came across as multiple poles down, um, we went ahead and recalled all three shifts, because I thought they're going to be out there for a while. Maybe we have something going on. I stepped outside. It really wasn't windy on this end of town, so I was a little confused at how that went. Regardless, fast forward, we go out there, we see all the damage. Uh, there were no injuries related to the storm, which is wonderful. But then the question is, why did the sirens not go off? So the sirens, um, they're set off by Logan County Emergency Management. They set the sirens off when the National Weather Service puts out a tornado warning or a severe thunderstorm warning, which has winds greater than seventy mile an hour and or hail one point seven five inches in diameter. So what came through, we had reports that people, you know, visually saw a tornado on the ground. According to National Weather Service, it was a microburst, which is a straight-line wind type of event. Um, I had some calls even today. W A and D was reporting we had a tornado. Um, I talked directly with National Weather Service. Uh, they're saying we did not. Regardless, there was a lot of damage. Now, with that being said, I'd also like to remind the public, uh, you know, the first Tuesday of the month at ten A M. When we test the sirens, if you don't hear your siren go off, call up here. Because we don't have enough people to spread out all over town and check them every month. So either way, that's what took place that day, and hopefully that clears some confusion up as to why those didn't go off. Uh, when that storm came in, like you said, it came in so fast. National Weather Service didn't see it on the radar. They didn't see any concern. Well, turns out that you can't exactly predict those, so.
Okay, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the council for the chief on that one or comments? Okay. And then the last one I have kind of is in relation to the storm that came through. So this is a uh prime opportunity for us to see an increase in solicitors in our community. It it actually was happening the day of. Um, I know there's businesses out there that try to get any uh business from hail damage for roofs and cars and from trees falling, et cetera. Um, I know I had a issue yesterday regarding in my neighborhood regarding a solicitor. Uh, I I spoke with the people that was soliciting because of my neighbor. I was looking out for my neighbor. And they they put up a lot of red flags in the way they were responding and being aggressive. So my point in this is some people may legitimately be in the community. They may be doing business. If they are, they would have come to City Hall and got a permit. If they don't have a permit, they should not be operating in the city until they do so. Don't be afraid to ask them to show share a permit. And that doesn't go just for the council. I think we're all entitled to look out for our community and make sure that the people that are here should be here, and we know they're here. If there's any questions about it, do as I did. Call the police department, and they will have an officer take the appropriate action and have a conversation with them, which they did. So. Okay, that's my last announcement. Does anybody else have an announcement? Alderman Downs and then Alderman Parrot.
Hey, um, so this this Saturday, the twelfth, uh, from ten to noon, um, the Humane Society is doing something really cool. They're doing a um Easter egg hunt for dogs at the dog part here in town. And then there's also a pet costume contest there, which I love those. So it should be a great time, open to the public. If you have a little dog that wears clothes, everyone would love to see it. Big dogs too, yeah. Um, so anyway, just wanted to make you aware. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve's got a big, beautiful dog.
Yeah, it's my wife's.
Yep. All right, Alderman Parrot.
Yeah, uh, Attorney Hobbleton, can you can you remind us what the requirements are for the parklets when they go up? And I've saw the one come out here um a couple of weeks ago. What what timeframe do they come out? What time do they, uh, because I've had some people talk to me. What time do they come out? What time do they uh close up for the year? And then are there any agreements that are supposed to be had each year with the businesses there that that it may be taking up space on?
Certainly, and Mr. Bateman can jump in at any point in time to correct me if I if I misspeak. But I believe, since he was very instrumental in the parklets, but I believe the uh parklets exist between April first and November first of each given year. There's an application that they need to fill out for each given year that they turn in for the said parklet. I mean, they they can avail themselves at the beginning of April first, but if they if they wait a little bit longer, then they just lose that time for that parklet till they turn that application, and it gets all and it gets approved. The it's not the neighboring businesses. The building owner has to get approval. So and the way it's phrased is the building owner typically has businesses. Um, for example, the the building that's, I have a business downtown and uh, uh, but I but I lease, I rent, you know. So there where the parklet goes up, you know, next to my business, they don't they don't need my approval because, you know, I don't I don't own the building, you know. So um, right now, they need those 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 requirements, those approvals. Uh, and we did, I will note, we did amend our code in twenty twenty-three uh that if that that approval's not uh cannot be gained in there. There there is certain situations from which they can make their case to the mayor directly um in in case there's, you know, a business owner that's just, you know, being um, how would you call it? Sure, yes. And and their and their reasons are not all that, you know, relevant. So um that that that's the that's the process, as I understand, Mr.
So so I'm assuming this one, I think, came out before March. Do we have a, is there a contract for this, this one?
This one? This one.
The one that's over in front of, like, the arcade?
Um, that one was put up April first.
It was just put up last Friday.
Yeah.
Last Friday.
Mr. Landers?
The blocks were at least put there last Friday.
Uh, it was April's April first because they spoke with me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. They they filled out the application and everything, and we had the application.
And it was approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And they did wait till April first to put it up? Yes.
No, no, it's been sent out to the appropriate people to approve.
The only ones that we've typically seen is in front of the Arcade Spirited Republic, in front of the Alleyby. Uh, Sorrento's used to do it, um, unfortunately, because they're closed. I don't know if we'll see that this year. And then uh Old Joe's, I think, put up one in the past as well. Uh, Rio used to. Oh, did Amigos? Yeah, Amigos is closed as well, so. And Rio's is up in the Welcome Park. We got them off of that narrow street for safety, so, yeah. We've only seen the one go up, and the second one applied for this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other announce? Yeah, Mr. Woodhull?
Yeah, just want to let everybody know that um with the GoGov app, we have now switched our permitting system. Back to everybody, obviously, but our permitting system is now through the GoGov portal, which you can find a link through the city website. With that portal, it also um has a push notification thing. So if you have that app, for instance, like Electronic Recycling, you'll get a alert on your phone, street closures, storm warnings, that sort of stuff, anything that um the landscape waste facility times, anything that we put out that's a um press release that involves that, so you'll get a push notification, which is really neat. So the so far, the portal has worked really well. Um, it's much like before. You fill out the form. You've got an account, not an account on there, but you uh you fill out all the information online. It's basically a lot quicker and easier, so. Um, I want to thank Cory Ingram and Charity Hutchison. I would say that they actually did all of this. Um, I couldn't figure it out at the get-go, but those two, um, they went above and beyond and really worked worked a lot to get it how it is, so appreciate that.
Yeah, one more reason to download the app if if you're tech savvy enough and you have a phone and and you'd like that. So, I mean, we've come a long way with that app from its original intended purpose.
Those two have worked. They worked a lot on it. Um, it took a lot of work getting all our old permits, you know, transferred to there, the fee schedule. Um, they've been several meetings over and over and over, and so I definitely want to thank them two both for all the work they put in on it.
Yep, I agree. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Bateman?
Also on the app, I've explained a couple of times, you don't have to sit in front of the property that you think is in a violation of some kind. If you just drive by and you notice the property and make it make a note of your whereabouts, you can actually go home, get on the app. And when you put in the property, it will bring up the map and you can, you can drop a pin in that block or in front of that. And then as Wes said, then fill out the form, say the four hundred block of such and such street. I believe this is going on or this is parked illegally. Doesn't have to be in your neighborhood. You know, it's just like the nationwide saying is, if you see something, say something. And then the appropriate departments, whether it be police, fire or code enforcement or street and alley would go out and investigate that. And then you would get notification on how that process is moving, whether they they found something, they didn't find something, or if they did, if there was a fine issued, then you can follow it all the way to completion. So that app's very good, very, it's very easy to use. So I just suggest people, you know, if they want to get involved in their community, download the app and use it to your advantages or disadvantages, however you want to put it. But it is easy to use.
Okay. Any other announcements? Mr. Downs?
All right, so I need to let you guys all know that I've accepted a new position within the company. So going to be winding down some of what I'm doing around here over the next several weeks. Family's still going to be in the area. I'm not going to be unreachable. None of my contact information's changing, but that's something you guys need to be aware of.
Congratulations.
I will probably miss him the most because Andrew will tell you, I call after hours on weekends, in the mornings. And we have bitch sessions for twenty, thirty, forty minutes at a time of different subjects that we can bounce off each other. So he is more polite about it than I am, but I will miss him greatly on the fact that we can, we can bounce things off each other on a variety of topics that goes on, not just sewer.
Yeah, I know the Department Heads will as well. They all work well together and and all of their work is closely tied and related. So they will as well. I will miss being able to pick up a phone and call. I'll probably still call you. Sorry, Andrew. But I know that you will have replacements.
Hundred percent. Because I can't see the guy wearing a suit every day. He'll get tired of that and go, I'm going to go back to my old job.
So and I'm good with Kevin's conversations, but if we can just do them after five AM, that's usually where I'm good. We've had a few that have started four, four-thirty, and that's, I'm not quite going then.
So, but thank you for your service to the city of Lincoln. Our community is better for what you've given us. So thank you very much and congratulations.
I do want to say Andrew always looked out for the best of the city. So. Yes.
He'll tackle any topic. You know, he's, he's probably the best at putting the city forward on what he wants to accomplish and do. And he'll be greatly missed. I mean, it's been fun.
He'll do good things for his company. Beoli is lucky to have him.
It's going to be a big loss, going to be a big loss for the city of Lincoln. Thank you for all that you've done for us. You've just gone way out of your way to make sure that everything's taken care of and so it's much appreciated.
I don't know. Yeah, when is it effective? Friday?
Last Monday.
Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Like I said, not dropping off the face of the earth. We've got, just like everyone sitting at this table, the things that you guys vote on, we've got a lot of irons in the fire still. So some of those things have to be wound down appropriately so we don't drop balls.
Okay, I don't know a better way to end a meeting. So if there are no other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alderman Parrott made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty PM.